I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. I'm sorry, we are one commissioner shy. I didn't notice that when I gabbled. I'm sure she'll be joining us presently. With that, we will begin with our invocation. No stranger to the commission, Rudy Garcia, please come forward and lead us in the invocation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Rudy Garcia with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Thank you. Our dear Father in heaven, we humbly bow our heads at the start of this meeting to give thee thanks and gratitude for this opportunity to do our part as we consider the needs of the community and those whom we serve. Dear Father, we're grateful for these wonderful individuals who have chosen this opportunity to serve the members of Clay County and the community and the businesses and the individuals that reside here. We're thankful for their sacrifices, for their support, and all that they do to support the community in a righteous way. We're grateful for this land of freedom that we have to be able to have the opportunities to serve as we desire, for the opportunity to have the things that we need. We pray that thy Spirit will lead and guide these commissioners, that they will make decisions that will be uplifting and edifying to not just those here in attendance, but all of those within the community with which we reside. Dear Father, we're grateful again to thee for our bounteous blessings, and say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte. Commissioner Willington. Commissioner Willington, yes. Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Carpenter.
Next is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, Commissioner Johnson? You are recognized.
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Willington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next item on our agenda this evening are public comments. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on any issues? If so, please come forward and address your comments to the commission. Yes, please make sure the microphone is on, state your name, and then proceed, so. There you go, now you're on.
If comments are allowed during the item, or do they need to be made now?
Come on up to the microphone a little bit more so we can record you better.
Are comments allowed during the item, or should we make our comments now?
I think you really pretty much have your choice, but I think my opinion would be that they might have more relevance and more context during the item if you have a specific one.
Thank you.
Any other comments or anything else to be addressed to the commission? Yes, please come on up to the microphone and state your name. And for anyone else who wishes to comment this evening while Mr. McHenry is making his way up.
My name is Mark McHenry, and I believe you've answered my question, Commissioner Nolte, that I'll speak to the issue when it comes up on your agenda.
I'm sorry, say again, please?
I'll speak to the issue when it comes up on your agenda.
That would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I was saying, anyone who wishes to speak, whether it's at this point or whether it's some future point during a discussion item, make sure you come up to the podium, make sure the green light is on, speak clearly into the microphone, state your name, and then proceed with whether comments or questions that you would like to address to the commission. I see no further public comments. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is Resolution 2024-287, approving invoice payments for Clay County for September 28th through October 4th. There are 309 invoices that total $935,061.32, and 2024 Ordinance 32, reappropriate and revise the adopted current budget in the amount of $5,810 for reimbursement for the Missouri Division of Tourism for advertising dollars.
Thank you. Are there any questions, anyone wishing to address the consent agenda? In that case, is there a motion related to the consent agenda? Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Further discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Willington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That brings us now to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2024-288. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-288 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Product Secutors Office from September 28th through October 4th. There are eight invoices totaling $1,429.21.
Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve 2024-288.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-288. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Willington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
I recuse myself.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next on the item is going to be 2024 Ordinance 34, and I gather that there will be some folks who would like to comment on that. The way we will proceed is the issue will be introduced. There will be some initial discussion with the commission, and then we will entertain comments from the public before we take our vote. So with that said, Administrator, let us proceed on 2024 Ordinance 34.
2024 Ordinance 34 is an ordinance regulating the use of taxpayers' funds by Clay County for nonprofit organizations.
And that is, I believe, Commissioner Johnson's issue. So Commissioner, if you would like to begin the discussion.
Yeah, I'll first move to approve 2024 Ordinance 34, then I'll speak on it.
Very well. Motion has been made for the approval of 2024 Ordinance 34, and I just want to point out to those who may be waiting to comment, until the vote is taken, you will have time to say whatever you would like to say. This is just to get the discussion going. So we have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized to continue.
Yeah, we spoke about this pretty extensively last week. I'm not going to spend any more time. I think all the commission knows my opinion, and if anybody out there listening tonight who wants to know my opinion, you can listen to last week's commission meeting online. We talked quite a bit about it. But I do want to point out, there's been a couple changes since last, very minor changes, just kind of cleanup changes that our attorney helped me with. One was, under the definition of nonprofit organizations, it added basically government entities, which are also nonprofit. And then under pass-through, pass-through funds was the other exception. Under Section 3.1, there's some exceptions there, and one is for pass-throughs. There's some funds that we get through the county that we just pass through onto some nonprofit organizations, so those will not be impacted either.
And that's the third bullet point.
Pardon me?
Third bullet point.
Yeah, 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 the third bullet point under Section 3.1. So with that, there was a couple of questions that came up last week. I can't remember who brought them up, but I'll just explain those real quick. One was about are we, are we, are we, will this lock future commissions into this ordinance? My response is, I wish it would. But at any time, any commission can change this, including this commission. If next year it wants to be changed, it can be changed. If next month it wants to be changed, it can be changed. So we're locked in as far as until you get four commissioners that want to change it, then it can be changed. Then the question was about, under the exceptions, there is nonprofits which support economic development initiatives. There was some assumption that that was specifically for the EDC. Not necessarily, although they should be, they would certainly be included in that. But up in, I just wanted to point out, up in the definitions, economic development is very specific. It's initiatives designed to promote business growth, business growth and job creation within Clay County. So it's meant to be something for the greater good. So it's kind of a return on investment for our taxpayers as a whole. But essentially, that's the really only questions I know that came up last week concerning it. And with that, I'll certainly take any questions if anybody has any questions or we can listen to anybody else.
Commissioner Lawson, I believe you will start recognition.
Yeah, not so much a question as a statement. This was something that was the most conflicting thing I've ever, you know, looked at and had to make a decision on. But I went to the people, and I asked a number of groups that I spoke with exactly how they felt about this, or is this a good idea, is this a bad idea? Overwhelmingly, those individuals I spoke with all said, "We love it. This is the way we'd like to have it." It still bothered me a little bit. But then, in our meeting last week, we talked about the fact that when we do these levies, levies are a little confusing to me, but they all, our administrator and the other commissioners got me pretty well lined out on those last time. And I now feel that we are making contributions through all of those already. And they, in turn, give money to a lot of the people we were giving, so it was kind of like a double dip in a way. So once that I found that out, I felt, I really was gratified, and I felt a lot better about the whole thing. The fact that we can go back and look and make decisions in the future makes me very comfortable as well. I think for right now, I like the way it looks. I, we've got to realize, and nobody realizes this, I was looking at the money that was encompassed in the, all of the $900,000 we just approved. In there are things from the courts, a lot of things from the courts, like, you know, for support for somebody that can't afford a lawyer, protection for women who have been battered. There are so many things that we pay for, not to mention roads and bridges, which are my favorite thing in the world, and our sheriff and all of the deputies, the things that they need, the jail. The jail sucks us dry. And, and you know, there are so many things that we have to pay for them, whether it's somebody being able to see a psychiatrist or special housing for somebody that's, you know, on suicide watch, or the food, every little thing. There are so many demands that are made that this is where you really see the saying, "Charity begins at home." Yeah, it sure in the heck does. And we've got a lot that we've got to work on. We've got a lot that we have to spend. We have a phenomenal staff who are painfully underpaid, and I'd like to see them get more money for all the things that they do, for the citizens as well as for us. So with having said that, then I just want to say that I didn't come to this decision lightly. It took a lot for me to say, "This is what we need to do at this point in time." And down the road, if things change, we get awfully cash-rich, I think then we look at where we can help. But in the interim, I'm completely comfortable with the way this document is written.
Commissioner Johnson, could you give us an idea of what dollar value we are looking to realize from this? I know you've probably got the figures there, but clearly where you don't support some, for instance.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't a big, a big dollar amount. It's about $300,000, roughly $300,000 on average is what we've been given over the past several years from the information that's been given. So it's not a big amount, but to Commissioner Lawson's point, this is $3,000 that, or $300,000 that we won't control and decide who gets it. But there's still about $13 million plus, not counting the pass-throughs. There's still about $13 million plus in taxpayer money. Clay County taxpayer money that's given out every year through the different boards, you know, Children's Services Board, there's our Senior Services, there's our Adult and Disabilities, there's our Mental Health. Three of those which are funded through our tax levies, our property tax levies. So there's, there's still, like I said, about $13 million roughly a year going out, sometimes more, to these nonprofit organizations of tax dollars.
The reason I ask is that it occurred to me that we do not, say, five years ago, the amount we were forwarding to EDC, even though they're exempted out of this, would have brought us up to that. So I wasn't sure if that amount was still, was still the amount that would be contemporary, as you said, over the past few years. So I mean, like, for instance, using last year as a benchmark.
Yeah, so I looked at for the last three, I don't know if you have last year's pulled up right now, but I know the presentation that our county administrator did a couple months ago when we talked about how to make it a more equitable system, because the equity was the other issue that we had that I think this will get rid of. But making a more equitable system, I think she had the numbers from, I think, the previous five years. I don't know if you have those or not.
That is correct. That was presented, you know, several months ago. A couple of caveats with that. So we have a sort of a department budget that we've had historically, and we've called it outside agencies. And what has been in that number has not only been our not-for-profits, but it also has been where we have allocated the funds for the University of Missouri Extension and also soil and conservation. And so those really, you have to take those numbers out because we are statutorily obligated to pay the university extension. And with soil and conservation, we have a contract with them, and they do work for us when there is development in the rural area. So those really are not not-for-profits. And so when I look at the current budget in 2024, the budget that we're currently in, what we have funded is $177,500 for, I believe, three not-for-profits. Rebuilding Together Kansas City, Northland Neighborhood Incorporated, and the Northland Healthcare. Those are the three not-for-profits that are in this year, and they have historically been the not-for-profits in the prior years. Last year, in 2023, was a little higher because we'd also had $100,000 that was given to the EDC in 2023, but not in 2024. So there's the big difference. But right now, basically, it's about $180,000 in this year's budget.
Yeah, the reason I was, and it is difficult because I think last time around, we doubled the amount of one of those entities, or close to it.
That is correct. Rebuilding Together Kansas City this year, funding them at $52,500 was more than what we'd done in the prior year. Typically, prior years had been around $30,000 for them. So there was an increase this year for that agency.
Very good. If you feel like you've addressed that point, I'll go to the next commissioner. Commissioner Wagner, you are recognized.
Thank you. And I too will ask those who want the unabridged edition, watch last week. So I'll try to be abridged with this one. So in many respects, I'm back where I was last week. And I know just from the discussion that we just had, it has not been the practice of this, of this body, even before I got on it, to indiscriminately give funds to a number of organizations. They have fallen under housing, health, and economic development. As far as I'm concerned, three areas that serve public purposes that would at least suggest that we should have interest in it and do something to help fund those activities. Granted, that there are, as mentioned, there are other funds out there. But as I also pointed out, those are not controlled by this body, and depending upon, should they make a change? Like, for example, the Children's Fund went all-in on mental health. So those that they didn't feel, even though they may have been given funds before, didn't fall into that category, they were not funded. And so it does suggest to me that although we cannot make everybody whole, nevertheless, there may be an opportunity for us to do something because whether it is economic development, housing, or health, even an extra few dollars may make the difference for an individual. And I think there is a public purpose in which to do so. Now, beyond that, I would also just point out that if, if it has been pointed out we have the opportunity to change this down the road whenever we please, I would also point out that we have the opportunity to change an allocation whenever we please during the budget. So what does this actually do? Well, it provides a guardrail up shore. But as we have demonstrated even last year, that even organizations that this cuts, would cut out, if you will, we still didn't fund. Thus showing that when given our prerogative, we at least have discussion, and a good discussion, on who we should fund and why or why not. So I, and I'll finally just end on where I think I ended last week, which is simply, we decided to adjust our levy, making a $300,000 difference. I have no idea how that affects our budget. I have no idea, at this point, even if we did not do this, that we have the ability to fund the organizations we did fund last year at the levels that we did. Because I do believe our first obligation is to our organization. And then if we feel satisfied with what we have, then there's the opportunity to help those other organizations that need it. So at this point, I get it, I understand it. I understand the guardrail principle behind it. But I do believe, for all those reasons, I will be in no vote this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, so I agree with Commissioner Wagner. I'm gonna, as we discussed last week, vote against the ordinance. And I do understand the, you know, sort of philosophical underpinnings of where y'all are coming from on it. And especially those of you who are new to the commission, newer to the commission. You know, these are, we were funding these entities before you got here, and it's perfectly, you know, within your rights to want to see a change in that regard and keep those funds for other county purposes. So I get that. I guess my view in part is, especially those of us who've been here a little bit longer, Commissioner Thompson and I, four years, and then, of course, Commissioner Nolte, ten years now. You know, I'm sure we all agree that when we fund something, we do so because we believe in it, because we think it's the right thing to do. You know, these are taxpayer funds, and, you know, I know we all strive to be good stewards of those funds and not spend them carelessly. And so over the course of the years in which we've been funding these entities, I've done so proudly. I've done so knowing that those dollars are going to do good work out in the communities, serve people. I know we have Rebuilding Together Kansas City here this evening. I was gratified when we increased their funding last year. I think we got some folks from Minn and I here as well. Northland Healthcare Access, who we've also funded over the years, I think, does amazing work for the residents of Clay County. And that's why I've proudly, you know, supported funding those entities over the years. I guess I would be a little bit surprised that after doing that for year after year after year and putting our names behind that, that we would then not just scale back or go to zero on the amount, but indeed go so far as to pass an ordinance that bans the commission from even engaging in the activity altogether after years of supporting these organizations. That just feels like quite a, quite a change in direction. And I would be curious as to why, especially those of us who have been supporting these entities all these years, why we would all of a sudden make that kind of a change in direction. I personally don't support making such a change to Commissioner Wagner's point. If we don't want to fund the entities, you know, we can always just choose not to do that. We don't have to be obligated via ordinance. As I mentioned last week, we're at less than two tenths of 1% of our county budget that we put toward these outside agencies. In my view, if it were up to me, I'd probably go a little higher than that. I know we've had requests from entities like Level Up Kids KC. And we're going to have a number from our existing organizations in this year's budget. I think they do amazing work. And that would be my preference if we were going to make a change, would be to go a little higher. That being said, as I also said last week, I understand we're, you know, cash tight, just like most governmental organizations, and we ought to be good stewards. So I haven't proposed doing big increases, and so I'm not going to propose doing a big increase. But I do think holding fast with our historic levels of funding is probably the right course forward. And yeah, so I would just ask, I ask you all, my fellow commissioners, to join me in protecting these sources of funding. Thanks.
Commissioner Lawson?
Just a quick question for Commissioner Johnson. In here, where it says, you talk about definitions, well, here, prohibition on spending, and you've got not-for-profits, not-for-profits, and then you've got situations in which grant funds or pass-through funds are obtained and which do not result in additional expenditure of Clay County funds. You're just talking about like the levies, right?
No, this would be like our domestic violence money that comes through us. It's not, it's not, it's not a tax that we do, but it comes through us that we give to the domestic violence board.
Yeah, it's on obligation already, okay.
So every now and then you'll find, like, there's certain, there was another one that came up before us, I think this last year, somewhere, that they needed us to be the funnel for some federal dollars, some to come through. But it's not our, it's not our citizens' taxpayer dollars.
And then the other was, when you talk about like economic development funding, this document isn't saying we are going to do it. It's saying that it can be a possibility to do it.
Right. And again, I want to clarify, some people thought I was talking specifically about the EDC, which is a group that's involved in economic development. It's not specifically for that. They're certainly included in that if they do. But what it requires it to do is, under Section 2, Number 3, says initiatives, economic development, initiative designed to promote business growth and job creation within Clay County. That's really what, what it needs to do. So if someone from the community, any group that wants to come and say, "Hey, we have, we need some funding for some economic development," well, it has to, it has to be something that's going to promote business and job creation within the county.
But it'll, it'll be a one-off thing, right?
Yeah, it would be, and we'd vote on each one of those if you want those to happen or not.
Okay.
And if I could address just a couple of things that were mentioned by my colleagues. The, I agree with Commissioner Carpenter that all these, all these are worthy causes. Don't get me wrong. And I mentioned this last week. I have nothing, I have no problem with what these different groups do. And they have been funded year in year for, I think, before all of us on the commission were here. I don't know about Jerry, he's been here since Stone Age, but, but it's, no offense.
None taken.
The, but one of the, one of the issues also, how did, how do we select those handful? In this case, it was just three this year, I think, when there are, like I mentioned last year, 1,745 nonprofits in this county, and three of them we're going to give money to. How did we choose that? And I'm sure of those 1,745, there's probably going to be several of them that are very, very, very good causes, just as good as the ones that we give to. And to me, that's where I think it's, I don't think we should be in that business. I think it could become too political. I think it's one of those issues where the taxpayers should be able to decide, "Hey, if I want to give to a nonprofit, I can do that." And by the very nature of nonprofits, they're not, they shouldn't be a government agency or rely on government funds. They're nonprofits, they're collecting money for their, and the government gives them a break on taxes because of that. a break on taxes because of that. You know, Commissioner, I forget who said it, but somebody talked about, you know, every penny counts, every cent counts, I think that was.
Well, said that.
Was it, okay. Somebody said, you know, every cent counts to these organizations. I don't disagree with that. Every cent also counts to our taxpayers. And that's where we gotta say, at what point do we stop taxing? At what point do we stop taking and taking and taking and decide where we're gonna, where we're gonna spend the money for them? And this is all those things. And when you look at, we're never gonna be at a point in this county where we say, oh, we're flush, we've got enough money, we've paved all the roads, and we replaced all the bridges, we're done with that now. We're just not gonna be there. And, you know, 100, 200, 300,000 dollars, that could put some asphalt down on a few miles of road. That could buy, that could give us, you know, a couple more employees out at roads and bridges. That can get us a couple more deputies, that can get us a couple more jailers, that can get a couple, you know, I was at the, the board meeting for the tourism board the other day, and they could certainly use some money, which could give us a return on investment. But, you know, everybody, every department out here I know is probably thinking, and they've probably had talks with our county administrator, it becomes budget time, hey, I'd like some more money. And she's probably said, no, we don't have that kind of money, we're gonna have to cut back a little bit on your request. That happens every year, because we don't have that extra money. But yet, we're gonna go ahead and give it to somebody else, a nonprofit. Worthy cause, don't get me wrong, but we're deciding taxpayers, we're gonna spend your money here instead of on the basics that we all, that we all ran on. Public safety, roads and bridges, you know, economy, businesses, small businesses, that kind of stuff. So I'll just stop right there, because I think there'll be more questions. But just remember, there's 1,745, last I checked, nonprofits in this county. That's a lot. And I don't, I don't think we should be picking three or four that we're gonna give money to. And we certainly can't give money to all of them. And like I said, there's already 13 million plus dollars of taxpayer money that's going to these nonprofits already.
I don't see any other commissioners seeking recognition at this time, so if anyone from the public would like to come forward and comment, once again, make sure the green light is on on the microphone, speak into the microphone, state your name, and then please proceed with your comment or your question.
Yes, my name is Deborah Herman, I'm with Northland Neighborhoods. I am here, I certainly understand tough times. One thing I want you to understand is we have enjoyed a partnership with Clay County. We have enjoyed joining together to make the best of Clay County be the best it can be for everybody that lives here. And we've done that. And I think Clay County has been a great partner. I'm not going to go on, you understand that, you've seen our budgets, you understand them. I want you to understand beyond the hundreds of people calling us low-income, all of them, for home repair. And I can't remember all, but I will tell you just the last few weeks, one of the things that we do continually, and we're glad they're there, is we meet what we call the Northland Community Action Team. It's police officers. And some of them that join are the Clay County sheriff people. One of the things we chose to do when we heard what they thought they needed is NNI has provided cameras that they needed to use in their neighborhoods. Not in, we don't tell them where to go. One thing, anyone that knows or has ever worked with me, I'm not a police officer, I don't pretend to be a police officer, but I sure listen to them. We provide those cameras, and on top of that, we're paying the price for them to be able to get the cameras and videos, whatever's necessary for those cameras to be helpful. Another thing we've had recently is a program at NNI that over 100 people came. This was at request of Clay County. We had a meeting there for all of the seniors to come and trained on how to use their taxes. Another one we had recent, well, today, two things happened today. We provide vaccines for all community. This is for COVID, this is for the flu, whatever. We open them up to the community. And of course, that's mostly Clay County. These aren't things we charge anybody, we open the door. Recently, we also had something that was requested by the prosecutor's office that came and did a program for the community on scam experience, you know, how to avoid that. One thing though, and I want you to understand this, because if anything really gets to my heart, today, and this just happened today, about 3:30 this afternoon, a couple seniors show up, they're both from Excelsior Springs, and they brought us homemade baked goods to thank them for fixing their home. Now, I understand you need to make decisions, and I think you're, at this, it understands we're not partners. Do we turn these people away? Do we send them back to you for home repair? Do we send them? We're working very well with people, we'd like to continue that. And that's my comment. I just want you to know where our heart is. We do care about our whole community, and we've tried real hard to do that. So also, the chair of our board, Mark McHenry, who's been a chair of many things, I don't know which one he is now.
Before we pass it off to the next witness, I want to make sure that there were no questions or comments from the commission for the lady at the podium.
Yeah, I will.
You are on.
Thank you. First, Deb, thanks for coming, I appreciate it, and I truly appreciate what you do and the work that NNI does. They do good work. A couple of questions. What is your total budget?
1.4 million, I think.
1.4 million?
But I'd like to understand that to you. Everyone would say, you get these big chunks of change. No, we don't. We get the money, we have grants. We send the improvement, or not improvement, the proving that we did the project. Here are the pictures, here's the worker, here's the contractor, here's everything we did, this is how we verified their income. Now will you pay us back? These are money, we don't get huge, millions in the, we don't get.
But you're getting over a million dollars in revenue every year. And what's your, what are your, what's your revenue source?
It's from grants, it's from the city, it's from, we get a lot of small grants.
Is it all tax dollars?
Excuse me?
Is it all from tax money, tax dollars?
No, it's, well, we get a small amount from some of the other cities. I'm not saying small. You talk about Excelsior, that's a very small place. For them to give you anything, it is very, very generous. We also apply for United Way, thinking of the other projects, my brain's drawn in. We also have FH, yeah, those are all grant.
What would you, what would you estimate the amount of, the percentage of your revenue comes from taxpayers? Whether it's through grants or anything else?
I would say a third.
A third? So two thirds of your income comes from other, other funding sources?
I believe that's right. Terry's sitting here too.
I think it's probably less than a third of taxpayer money.
And then last year, you got from this commission, what was it, 70, 75,000?
Yes.
75,000. But did you also receive funds from our seniors' tax levy?
Again, we get no cash, whether we get 20,000 or something. We do the improvements, we get re, but we never double, double dip, ever.
Say again, you never what?
We don't double dip. These are projects, we do a project, and we are paid for it.
No, I, oh yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying double dip anything sinister, I'm just, so but, but you're getting money from the county through our senior services, that's the levy that we have on property taxes for senior services that goes to your agency. How much, and how much goes to your agency from senior services?
Is it 15 now per year, 20 at a time or something? My finances.
30 to 50,000 roughly? Okay. So just so you know, that doesn't stop.
Well, what doesn't stop?
That doesn't go away.
The people in line needing help only grows. And they're all low-income people.
Okay. And then the other thing, and I mentioned before, is over 1,700 nonprofits in this county. And so you're getting, whether 30 to 50 from our seniors' fund and another 75, so you're getting over, you know, well over 100,000 dollars. No one else is getting that.
And I'll bet you 99 or 90% of them don't want to do what we do.
Oh, I, okay.
If you look at the amount of admin and the amount that we're making, that's not why we're in the business.
Can you tell me this? Do you know what your payroll is for your, for NNI?
It's 15, 15,000 per month, I believe, 15. I could get that exactly for you.
15,000 a month, about, about 180,000 a year? Is that right?
I would have to go back and look.
Roughly.
I would have been glad to bring the documents for you.
Because you're also on the Children's Services Fund Board, aren't you?
Correct.
And that brings in roughly 12 million dollars in sales tax?
A little less than that, but yes, it brings it close to it.
And the, and the salaries for managing the 12 million dollars, looking at your budget this year, is 162,000 for 12 million. And you, you charge, you're basically 180,000 plus to deal with 1 million. Is that right?
Excuse me?
In other words, the Clay County Children's Services Fund is managing 12 million plus a year.
Correct.
And they do that with the staff that gets paid 162,000 dollars a year, according to your budget. Why say your budget, because you're on that board as well. But yet, NNI has a budget of 1/12 of that, but has more expenses for salaries.
I think you would need to look very closely at what each of them do.
No, no, I, I, I forget what they do. What I'm saying is, is, these are the kind of things, when I give money to charitable organizations, I look at details. I look at stuff like that. Most people don't, taxpayers want to have that option to do that. They don't want us to take, and I'm not, again, I love what you guys do. I love what you guys do. People don't like us taking their money and deciding who we're gonna give it to. And that's what I've been hearing, resounding from, from people I've talked to, and I know some of us, there've been a lot of emails this week about this, saying the same thing. And I don't think it's unfair to be able to say, hey, listen, you're still tapping into our senior services fund at 30 to 50,000 dollars a year. And we have, you know, over 1,700 other nonprofits that aren't getting a dime from us in this county. And so I don't, I don't think it's unfair to say, listen, Commissioner, you gotta stop handing out this money because we don't have extra money. And these nonprofits can go through things like the children's services, things like senior services, development disabilities, mental health, domestic violence board. We have all those in place that funnel that money through these boards, and people don't come to the commission. And I still don't know how we even started, just giving NNI and a couple other agencies money and no other nonprofits. If we advertised it, or if there's just somebody asked, or even how that worked, and maybe you can shed some light on that too, I don't, I don't know.
I don't, because they were partnering with NNI before I was at NNI.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And there is, I think what we do is an example of how people, as little money as we have to spend to run that.
Yeah.
And certainly, if you look at how the children's fund started, I was the first chair and set them to get that started. And it's a totally separate organization doing, I'm not saying not, that's not, that's not a negative thing, they're just a different organization.
Well, and the difference was that the people voted on that. The people voted to give that quarter cent sales tax to the children's funds, which gets funneled out to, you know, through grants to a lot of different, a lot of different agencies, as you know. So that's the difference. I don't think that we were elected to find some extra money somewhere that we can give to whatever charitable organizations the six, seven of us decided to give to. That's a philosophical difference. And that's why, and we talked about last week, I don't know if you heard us last week, this isn't a good versus evil thing, and I know my colleagues, some of them disagree with me. This is just a philosophical thing. What do we think government's role is? And certainly, some of my colleagues completely disagree with me. I just don't think it's government's role to take other people's money and give it to organizations like yours. I'd rather be able to give my own money to your organization and have other people give their own money to your organization. My, my, my thought is, hey, you know, you're a nonprofit. Any idea how much taxes you don't pay because you're a nonprofit?
No, well, you just heard what I'm hearing, it's 1 point whatever million.
Yeah, it's tens of thousands of dollars that you don't pay, nonprofits don't pay, that everybody else does have to pay. To me, that's, that's the gift from, from the government to the nonprofits for doing the work that you do.
And I hope you would understand more of what we do. No one that works for us has health insurance. No, I mean, there are things that, no, but there are things that we are not a normal business.
I get it.
That is not.
I get it. You do great work. NNI does great work. I don't, I'm giving you that 100%, and I support you guys. I just don't think it's my, and actually, I'll give you money myself, but I don't think it's my role to give taxpayer money to you. I don't think it's my role to take from somebody else and say, you're gonna give to this organization, when they may very well want to give to another organization, or may very well just don't have extra money to give. And just like this county, I don't think, we don't have, I don't think we have extra money to give. We have, we got people complaining about their roads all the time. This money could pave a lot more roads than we're paving now. We could hire more employees, we could give some raises to these people sitting behind you that don't make a whole lot of money, just like a lot of your employees don't make a whole lot of money, which, which I would like to be able to do. And so what it is, it's just a matter of, we have so much money, so we have to have a philosophical conversation of where does this money get spent? And that's kind of what we're going through now. There's certainly an argument on one side, and I'm obviously on the other side, and there's maybe somewhere in between, but, so that's what it's going, so please don't take this as an attack on what you guys do, or that we don't value what you do.
I understand, but I'll tell you maybe where some of my attitude comes from.
Yeah.
Is when you wake up in the morning to have your phone ringing as a senior citizen whose furnace is out and his pipes are freezing and he needs help now.
Yeah.
And no one is turned away from NNI, we find a way. If they meet our incomes, because you have to be a low-income to get the assistance, you're gonna get helped. That's always been important to Clay County, that that be available. There are not many organizations that do what we do.
Well, and we're funding that through our senior service board. We're giving you 30 to 50,000 for that.
Okay. That's, that's, you're gonna be telling a lot of people, no. I mean, that's just what's gonna happen.
Yeah. Or you can, you can solicit money from non-government agencies. Solicit money from private, from private, don't solicit money from taxpayer dollars, solicit money from, directly from the people. That's where the hangup is. The hangup is that we're taking the money and giving it to you. Go get it from them yourself. That's, that's really what a nonprofit needs to do, is go out there and get that money themselves, however that is, however that works, and obviously you guys are.
That, generally, that attitude, and no offense, but it comes with, from people that have a lot of money. Those are the things that say, well, get your money from people that'll give you money. The people that have money don't want to give it away. We do have low-income.
I disagree with that.
We do have income, we do try.
Yeah. No, I, again, I appreciate what you do, and I don't want you to take this as an attack on you, but I really think that nonprofits should really be looking for not government funding to fund them, but other, other means of funding them. I just don't think that's, that's what, I don't think we should be in the business of that. Again, it's a philosophical thing of taking taxpayers' money and spending it for something that maybe they don't want to spend on.
I understand.
And it's not really for the greater good, I guess.
There are more questions.
I know you got someone else who wants to talk.
Yeah, there are more questions for you. I have another commissioner I would like to inquire of her.
I'm happy to wait until Mark is.
Okay. Before you go, I just want, because you have the unique position of serving in both bodies, both the children's fund and of course, NNI. The distinction that I draw is the children's fund is essentially a board. They meet, they make decisions, that's their function, and that, and I think they do it very well. NNI has a board and an organization both, so it's, it would, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison as far as, as salaries go, because if you just had a board and you did not have any other employees, except similar to what the children's fund have, then your, your overhead would look a little different, but you're two different complete animals.
The dollars expense much of it, most of it would go to employees. But they're not employees that work for them. They're giving the school district, they're giving what's used to be Tri-County, I can't think, Beacon, they give organ, who are paying their employees. And many of them are nonprofit. Synergy gets dollars, there's several other organizations. So in a way, it's still going to employees, but it's not directly from that organization. Anything else?
Please be, you know, I'm sure you'll be available if someone else has, would like to inquire of you. Mr. McHenry, if you'd like to go ahead and come forward, make your statement, we have at least one commissioner who would like to have a follow-up with you, so please proceed.
Sure, thank you for the time. Mark McHenry, I currently chair as the, Chair of the Northland Neighborhoods Board. I've been a resident of Clay County since 1976. And so I think I've learned a bit about what goes on in Clay County, and I appreciate your time this evening. I'd like to kind of tag on a little bit to Commissioner Johnson's comments about the not-for-profit organizations. I didn't know there was that many, I'm not surprised to hear that. I serve on two other Northland not-for-profit boards. We don't get any public money. We don't ever ask for it, and probably at this point, we're not going to ask for it. I think the one thing that I've noted about Northland Neighborhoods is we provide this great public forum location. And I'm not sure how many of those other nonprofits do that. We have a meeting space that's open to the public, where you can have meetings. We don't charge, as Deb mentioned earlier. She mentioned a couple examples of the vaccine clinics that happened earlier today. Of course, that's COVID and flu shots. It was two weeks ago, I believe, we had the one relationship to the conversation this county is having about some tax relief for senior citizens. Open forum, no cost. And we have a nice meeting space for that. I'm sure a lot of not-for-profits don't have a meeting space that's open to the public. I think that's relevant. Zachary Thompson, who visited us here not too long ago, talked about the issue Deb mentioned in regard to, you know, some of these potential crimes that could be committed through the internet and other ways to senior citizens. So we have that forum, and it seems like every time I go down there, we've got some other meeting going on to do that. So I think that's a pretty relevant point, how that takes place. The other thing I want to simply mention, I've been working in city government and state government for almost fifty years. And in both organizations I've worked for, Department of Parks and Recreation, Kansas City, Missouri, now I work for the governor in Jeff City for the Conservation Commission, we've always had partnerships. And what I see of those is a return on investment. Now, granted, we put public money into those programs, a lot of not-for-profits, both, there again, city and state, the return on investment. So they provide things we can't do, some, they have the expertise that we don't have, because county can't do everything. You have your resources limited, I understand that. But there's certain things a county does great, and I think, you know, law enforcement, roads and bridges, infrastructure, perfect. But a lot of these social service programs, I think you get a lot of added value by having the not-for-profits do it. So when I say return on investment, it's exactly what it is. You put in a dollar, the other agency puts in a dollar, and then it expands itself. I think that's really relevant on return on investment. You ask about funding, I know Terry and Deb have more focus on the funding part of it. I write a check every year to Northland Neighborhoods, and so do a lot of my fellow board members do that. We send out a flyer and do the same thing. Now, we used to have some breakfast, where people would come in and, you know, they'd pay a little extra for the breakfast, and we'd have a fundraiser. COVID kind of set that to the side, but we still collect money from citizens, and we get some revenue from it. So we are giving some private money to go with the public money that goes with it. So there again, return on investment. We talk about economic development. What I've learned in fifty years that quality of life, livability of a community has a huge impact on economic development. We always think in terms of economic development, someone's building something, but people only build things because they want to live there. That's why houses are built, that's why commercial developments take place, because people want to live there. It's about quality of life, and that really ties into economic development. So I think everything we're doing relates to economic development. Strong neighborhoods build this city, that's a big part of it. We support neighborhoods heavily. And there again, they rely on, as Deb mentioned earlier, so neighborhoods, economic development, it all kind of plays together. We had a meeting earlier this week in relationship to some development along North Oak Trafficway. Now, that was KCMO TIF funds, but we put that whole deal together and created a new program, which is Development Along North Oak, which is a challenged corridor. Commissioner Nolte, thank you, I know you represent the county on that, and it was approved. We're going to enhance the development along North Oak. Now, it's not our money, it's KCMO TIF money, but we are the ones that volunteered to rewrite that ordinance so that they would approve it. So we did that with Northland Neighborhoods. So there again, that's economic development, that's kind of the way I see that taking place. I know you've got some challenges, you've talked, Commissioner Lawson talked about roads and bridges and things of that, and I've heard that from you as well, Mr. Johnson, about important. I think I heard a point oh-two percent from Commissioner Carpenter a second ago, I think that relates to one hundred and seventy-seven thousand. If you take our seventy-five thousand, it's point zero-zero-six percent. Seems like a small percentage of your budget, and I understand you have other needs, but we do appreciate it. And we've just tried to do the best job we can, and we're there to help, we never say no, we're always open doors to people, we're glad to assist. And as far as the history of this is concerned, I'm glad you've been doing it in the past, and we hope that you continue to support us over time. And if you don't, we understand. I mean, you've got to make decisions, you're, I don't know how you do your budgets in Clay County. City government, we do what we call priority-based budgeting. State government, we do priority-based budgeting, we look at our priorities and say, it's kind of like, and I'm not sure if they're right, the biggest bang for your buck, is kind of how I say it. Well, yeah, if you fix a road, sure, people drive on it, but when you do things that are related to the community, and support your citizens, support the neighborhoods, and support the quality of life, I think you're putting a big improvement to our community. So thank you for your time. Any questions?
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. No questions for you, Mark. I think I agree with what you've said. I was just going to make a couple of comments. One is, I am reminded in our discussion of what is essentially three hundred thousand dollars. Ms. Herman had the fun in her second term as a Kansas City Councilwoman to find sixty million dollars when the two thousand eight recession hit. This is kind of paltry when you think about it in those sorts of terms. I too, and I don't mean to jump in on this, but I do believe the comparison that was made earlier is an apples-to-oranges ones, and you've brought that up, too. Because those taxes and those commissions that decide on where those taxes are spent aren't doing the work. But in this case, NNI is. You have staff, you have people that go out into the neighborhood, you have people that you pay to go do the work, that you have identified needs to be done, and so on and so forth, with contractors and so on. So, you know, whether it comes from a senior services fund, or it comes from the Kaufman Foundation, or wherever it comes from, the structure of their organization will be much different than who they give the money to. So, you know, if we are to make comment on how that money is spent, then I would offer that a different comparison is very much necessary. I again find myself thinking about this in many respects as a false choice, because I do respect the fact that my colleagues have talked to individuals on what do they think about this spending, but I would answer, I would respond to that the same way to just telling someone, just go find someone else to give you money. At the end of the day, people care about what they care about, and usually, it is something that they have a personal affinity for. And the reality is, when you start talking about, I got to replace roofs, or redo porches, or I've got to put in HVAC systems that will cost anywhere between six and ten thousand dollars, and now you're passing the hat, well, I've been to NNI for many, many years, and the people that show up there are in many respects this close to having to ask for that same assistance. So it's not that easy. So why does Gladstone and Excelsior Springs in Kansas City enter into contracts for NNI and other types of organizations to do this kind of work? It is because there is a public purpose, and the public purpose is to make those neighborhoods stay as strong as they possibly can, because I'll guarantee you, if you let them fold, the cost of coming in and fixing that is many, many times seventy thousand dollars, guaranteed. So I would just caution us, if we are simply going to say, people don't want to spend that, and we want to do them a solid by not spending that, because we could spend money for NNI on roads and bridges and stuff, then why in the world that two weeks ago did we say, we're going to give everybody back on average a dollar seventy to go buy half a candy bar, because we didn't seem to need that money two weeks ago? I have an issue with how we are approaching this, and again, I will just point out again that the ability for us to give money, not give money, create systems around that giving or not giving, comes in our budget process, which is imminently near. And I would just assume, see where we're at. And again, I'm just going, since you're all here, I'm just going to say, if we didn't pass this and we go through our budget, we may have to give you a haircut anyway, although you're looking fine, Mark, and so I'm not going to suggest anything. But I'm going to go publicly and say, I'm not guaranteeing anybody money, but I would like to have the opportunity to know what I've got in order to make that decision. So, Mark, thanks for being here and standing up while I gave my diatribe, so.
Before, go Royals.
Go there.
Oh, don't, you have some more, oh, you can, no, before you go, before you do the Royals. Commissioner Lawson is going to want to ask you some questions and make some comments.
Sure.
One of the things I wanted to observe before going to her was, we're currently involved in the process of implementing our freeze on the senior citizens' property taxes, the assessed value, that is. And if I recall correctly, you folks were hosting some of those.
Yeah.
Public forums, so certainly we appreciate that. Commissioner Lawson, you are recognized.
So we talked about, a little bit about the different entities like your Gladstone, Excelsior Springs, Arnie, whomever. You actually get funds from those folks as well to assist, do they not? Don't they pay?
I'd have to defer to Terry on there, Deb.
In every instance, like Excelsior Springs, we are reimbursed once we, on an approval, on a project that they've approved. And we show everything that we've verified their income. In this case, one of the houses is a historic house, so it has, we have to be real careful about how we do it, but it's all been done, we pay the contractor, the materials have been, and then we get reimbursed.
Oh, okay. So you do the work, and then whatever they reimburse you, same way, say Gladstone, an elderly lady's house is falling apart, you guys come in and re-roof and do all the maintenance you need to do, and then you give that bill to Gladstone, and they do reimburse for what you've done, right?
Up to a top of what, I mean, for Excelsior Springs, it's ten thousand.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, it's not like you can do whatever you want.
Will they do multiple? Say you fix, can you fix four houses in Excelsior?
No. Well, we can if we use FHLB, because we've been tying it together, I don't know if we can do four, but we tie it together with Clay County.
Okay.
We tie it together with FHLB, and we can sometimes find a way. The one we're fixing, now the numbers aren't before me, but the one we're doing now in Excelsior Springs, it is historic house. It's also important to Excelsior Springs that that house is saved, because apparently the roof is bad enough that it's not fixed, I mean, they may lose the house totally. That was, it's more than a hundred to even fix that house, but they've already said they're going to give us more next year. So last year's money that they approved, and next year's money, plus we're pulling in out of a grant.
Yeah.
Sometimes, if you've had stuff done with your own home, it is very, very expensive to have any work done.
Sure.
And I'll tell you, though, you will, if they meet the incomes, if they turn to what they need to, and we do have some saying, what do you mean I have to give you stuff? I'm not giving you, if we don't have your income information, we can't spend, we just can't do it. But if you've brought in your stuff, we find, yes, my staff, I've got a couple staff that there's a special place in heaven for them, because they will work and work and work to find a way.
No. And, you know, here again, as Commissioner Johnson said, I have known of NNI for a very long time, and I know that you do a lot of good all over, you know, the Northland, and I admire that. I was, when Commissioner Johnson mentioned this last week, I thought, okay, you know, we'll look at it and see. I was shocked at the number of emails and texts I got from people that were solidly saying, you really need to do this. Now, I'll say this, if I didn't think it was the right thing to do, I don't give a damn, frankly, how many people came to me and said, you need to vote this way. If I don't think it's the right vote, I'm not going to do it. I feel that this is the right vote for this time. I was gratified that we can, we can go back and look and make changes if we need to make changes. But you know, here's the thing, I think about, this really hit me in the gut. They have a group called, what, Level Up, is that the name of it? Level Up does great work for young people that have, you know, needs for dental work. And I went there, and when I left, I was almost crying, because there were three or four kids in there that they were helping, and a great-looking place, it looked like a kid place. And they were helping them, and I talked to the lady who was the director, and she was telling me how they go to the schools, and they try to help the kids at the schools. They do everything they can, help them with glasses even. And their expenses are massive, and they had lost a couple of major contributors. And I thought, what the heck are they going to do? You know, I came back and I was telling everybody about it, well, we didn't have the money to do what we wanted to do. You know, I think we'd all want to help, but their money wasn't there. There's that organization, there's, like Commissioner Johnson said, there's thousands of organizations that need assistance. And if I were a wealthy woman, I'd be handing out the dough all I could. But some of these people that come in here and try, just beg us not to make them pay a penalty that's on their taxes, because they can't, they can, it's almost a matter of, do I make my house payment, or do I pay my taxes? You know, what do I do? We, I see so many, Excelsior, prime place, there's some very nice areas, there's some very needy areas. And those people have trouble making rent payments, and yet, they have to pay the darn taxes. They don't have a choice in doing that, or they don't get their car license, or whatever else might happen. So, you know, I have to think that while charitable is a good thing, you know, I think that we have to go to the old thing, charity begins at home, which it should, and I think we go ahead and take care of our own, that we need to, right here, right now, and down the road, if we're able to assist people, I think we can. But how do you give one organization a huge sum of money, in my book, a huge sum, and give somebody else that needs it just as bad nothing, and say, we can't help you at all, we don't have the funds, yet we're handing out seventy thousand dollars to another organization? I know what you do, and I respect the heck out of you and your organization, but, you know, I think we really have to take a hard look in these hard economic times of where we put our money, how we spend our money, the services that we're not being able to provide, just everyday services that we should be taking care of. It's, to me, it's overwhelming. It's totally overwhelming. So I don't take any of this lightly. I don't make any decision just off of whim, and because I like Jay Johnson more than I like Jason, you know? Those aren't the way I make decisions. I make them because I feel they're the right thing to do. And consequently, I wholeheartedly support this with the idea that changes can be made down the road. So I thank you so much. I thank you for what you do, and I thank you for having the guts to come and talk.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No. I thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes, please come forward, and once again, identify yourselves, speak into the microphone, and address your questions or comments to the commission.
I'm Scott Hickox from Rebuilding Together Kansas City, and when I reached out to Diana some time ago and asked to come, I really wanted to come tonight to say thank you, and just to give a report on what we did this year. I didn't know this was going to be the conversation tonight, so I understand completely the challenge you have, and again, I do want to just say thank you. Last year, as has already been noted, you gave, I think, the largest gift you've ever given to Rebuilding Together Kansas City, and we're grateful for that. As a result, we were able to do more work in Clay County than we've ever done before, over four hundred thousand dollars year-to-date we've spent in this county, improving homes, doing similar work to NNI. And again, so we're just, we're very grateful for that. I brought, this is just a report, kind of what happened year-to-date. Is it, who am I, who passes this out?
If you could, go ahead and keep, yeah, is that the report for the later part of the meeting?
That's perfect. I just wanted you to be aware of, you know, how the money got spent, the things that we did. We served eight communities within Clay County, so obviously not just in Liberty or Kansas City.
Well, I was going to recommend was, if you could keep your comments to the issue at hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 that's okay, no, it's, but the other thing is, we have a separate part of the meeting where you will be able to give us that. Now, clearly, you can impart information.
I don't need to come up again.
But I want to make sure that we were not slipping into the report part, but whatever you have, your comments as far as how the issue that we are currently having a discussion, if you could tell us how that would impact, thank you, your organization, that might be helpful, is that, yes?
Excuse me, Commissioner Nolte. Actually, I spoke to our speaker and suggested that he come up and whatever he was going to present, which in essence, when we put him on the agenda for discussion item, was to talk about what was accomplished by their organization, so I wanted to suggest to him that he present that to you now, before you took a vote. And so this really sort of is sort of his.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Discussions, I'm sorry about that.
I'll do whatever you, whatever you like, I don't feel like I need to come back up, so.
Like I say, I was trying to keep them separate, but the thing is, it overlaps, because it is relevant to the issue, but I didn't want to then just go out of order without, is there any issue with the commission's hearing this report now as opposed to later, that we seem to have consensus, so proceed as however you wish.
Well, perfect. So, again, it's, it really was, I came tonight to say thank you. It really does make a difference in the work that we do. Hearing some of the questions that you had for NNI, we, we have a budget of about a million dollars. We raise about 60% of that from private donations, so we get a fair amount from people in the community that believe in the work we do and want to support it. But we do also get the benefit of tax dollars as well, and that's, it's been significant for us and helped us do the work. 107 projects, I think, to date, and 104 projects to date, 76 of which of those have been in Clay County this year. That's included 74 seniors, 14 veterans, 21 kids, all served as a result of that. Again, I mentioned the different communities that we've served, Excelsior Springs, Gladstone, Kansas City, Kearney, Liberty, North Kansas City, Pleasant Valley and, and Smithville. I think one of the things that we're seeing and maybe speaks to a little bit of just the need that has already been expressed, but may be helpful for you to understand, we're going to serve, I don't know, 10 or maybe close to 20% more families this year than we did a year ago, but what's more significant than that is, we're going to do probably over 50% more essential repairs this year than we did a year ago. And I think that just speaks to the need. When people come to us, obviously, the need that they express, the presenting need is usually not the only need and sometimes not even the most important need. And so, yeah, we're just, we're serving a small increase in the total number of families served, but the amount of work we're doing for those families is, is significant. Again, over 50% increase this year. I think one thing that was just, just our commitment to Clay County, just so you understand, it was middle of this year, we had a group of volunteers come in to do some of the work that we do. They brought more volunteers than, than they, than we realized that we needed for the project. And so, I actually reached out to Diana and said, we have some, some extra volunteers. She put me in touch with the Parks Commission and we got, anyway, we used those volunteers and got all the shelter houses painted at Smithville Lake. So, it was just a, it was a cool opportunity for us to sort of give back and, and use some of the volunteer labor that we have. So, anyway, I don't know if you have questions, but again, we do a lot of similar repair, similar work to, to Northland Neighborhood. We do essential home repairs and safety modifications for people in need. The average household income of our client is about $19,000, so just to give you a perspective on the people that are coming to us, the needs that they have. And again, your, your support of us has made a significant difference in the lives of people in Clay County, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Johnson, you were seeking recognition?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for what you do and, and what your, your folks do, and I really appreciate it. You might have said this, but I missed it, what's your, what is your budget?
Right out of a million dollars.
Right out of a million. And what's your, where's your revenue come from?
Lots of places. I said, we raise about 60% private donations, so about $600,000 comes from that. Then we get, we got, obviously, we get some money from Clay County Senior Services, we get a little bit of money from you. We get $10,000 from Excelsior Springs as well. We get, we have a couple of national partners through Rebuilding Together, the national organization, so Spectrum funded a project for about $30,000. Last year, Travis Kelsey's Foundation helped us do a home for about $35,000. So, we, you know, we're just trying to grab it, grants, grant money wherever we can.
Yeah, good. I actually, I really wanted to make sure that you are familiar with the, our senior services.
Yeah, we work, we work closely with them. Yeah, they're great, they're great partners.
Any children-related stuff can go through our Children's Fund, Service Fund, through that board, but, okay, perfect, thank you, and I appreciate it.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Oh, no, no, we do have another, excuse me, Commissioner Carpenter, you were seeking...
Just want to say thanks for coming out tonight and the presentation and a big, a big fan of y'all's organization for a number of years. Had the good fortune of going to Northtown, North Kansas High School with Clay's niece, and so was introduced to the good work that the organization's been doing for over a decade and just a big fan, and thanks for doing it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say, first off, thank you for the, providing us with volunteers, that's a bit of a, I, I don't know if I'd qualify, I'd qualify that as a return on investment, but certainly it is appreciated. And I'm sure, so what would, you know, the loss of this funding, could you tell us a little bit about what that would kind of mean to the organization? Because the, two years ago, you had a certain amount, then last year, we, I think roughly doubled it, and now we're talking about cutting it all together, so it's a little back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, any, any funding we lose, it makes a difference, we're going to have to go out and try and find it somewhere else. We want to continue, I mean, our board has made it pretty clear to me that we want to continue to grow and serve more folks, and so that just requires more money, and we're continuing to do that. We're trying to broaden our reach a bit. We are rebuilding together Kansas City now, so trying to, you know, we do some more work in Platte County and a little bit in Jackson County, so trying to raise funding in those places as well. But it will hurt, you know, we'll, we'll miss the money for sure, and we will continue to do our best to serve everyone in Clay County that we can because that's who we are and what we're going to do, but it will, it'll just make it a little more challenging.
Commissioner Johnson?
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, so you, I'm glad you're getting some money through the Senior Services Fund. How much do you get from that?
We get $60,000.
$60,000? Okay. Just so you know, that, that won't change. Well, I don't know what they, how they, but this doesn't, has nothing to do with that.
Understand, understand.
Any other questions or comments for this person, this citizen? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the commission on this issue? Before I will, so we seem to have pretty much discussed the issue, however, before I go to Commissioner Johnson to close, I want to make sure that, because a couple of commissioners haven't really weighed in, is there anything, I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to participate in our discussion. Any further discussion? Very well, Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized to make any closing comments and to close. There you go. I think enough's been said, I close. Very well. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
No.
Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Commissioner Nolte?
Yes.
Motion passes for three.
I do want to make sure that if there's anything else to be said from a building together that wanted to be added, we did hit that discussion item. I think we covered it, but I didn't want to presume. Okay, they, that seems to have been covered, therefore, that brings us to the second one, which is the fee schedule, and that would be our auditor.
That is correct. As part of the annual process, we bring forward to the commissioners for consideration the fee schedule, not only for 2025, but we also do a projection and forecast out. And so, Auditor Herbert is here to provide an overview of those proposed fees for 2025 and the next few years.
Please proceed.
Yes, Victor Herbert, Clay County Auditor. I'm going to get this pulled up here in just a second. Okay, so yeah, as the administrator mentioned, every year, we go through this process of setting fee schedules, a five-year fee schedule for forecasting and long-term planning. I think that's, that's what we're doing, why it should matter to you. I think, you know, go back to the PAFR, that basically, that, you know, financial high-level report for our citizens, fines and fees represent roughly 15% of your revenues. What's before you is not all that 15%, it's not, not the fines, only the fees, and it's not all the fees. But nevertheless, it is an important element to the revenues that fund this county's operations. So, without further ado, I'll dive right in. You do have before you the packet for the resolution to come up presumably at next week's meeting, and so I won't go through every single part of that and every single fee. Essentially, I just want to note though, that we have a, a rather consistent process of noting on those fee schedules, what's changed, trying to highlight, you know, what's changed. Typically, our process is to only change the fifth year out, or 2029 in this case. However, in some instances, departments have requested to make a change before then, maybe more immediate. We have all of our, you know, respective subject matter experts, department heads here, should we have any specific question about those, you know, about those specific fees. But what I wanted to do in addition to just showing that packet, is I put together a very brief presentation of each of these 12 schedules, give you some contextual financial information so you can evaluate sort of what that financial impact would be and really line out what those changes are from the, the fee schedules that are up for discussion. So, very briefly, airport, you can see the, the changes that are, that are presented here essentially, a little bit of changes in the structures as far as late fees and as well as if you pay in advance, you know, what sort of discount you can get. And you can see the annual revenues we received. Certainly, it's in a different situation now because of the FBO agreement. I'll go ahead and pause with each one, Mr. Presiding Commissioner, and happy to answer any questions on any of them, otherwise I'll just continue on through.
Is there any question or comment?
So, with the clerk here, you see a lot of their revenue sources. The only change I think I would mention on this one in particular is that they're proposing to charge for reproduction of, you know, physical media for sunshine meeting, you know, recordings, minutes like that. Do we have any questions for that?
Seeing none.
Facilities, we don't really collect many revenues for those, but this is for room reservations, and so that schedules in there, and there really aren't any changes. I'll continue going through, just, just let me know if you have any questions, otherwise I'll, I'll just go ahead and stop at the end, I think. So, GIS, this is a new department and they're collecting revenues for map sales, right? So, and the changes here that we can see are primarily looking at adding newer map additions. I think we have an outdated fee schedule, so that's what our, our director is proposing. And then also, really, it, it seemed to me, just kind of, you know, charging more for the newer maps and less for the older ones, and you can see that outline there. In the golf course, you can see the revenues associated with the golf course. And mind you, on each of these department pages, it's not going to be all the revenues. I'm really focusing on the ones that are on the schedule that, you know, could, that you could look at changing. So, that's what you have with the golf course here, not really many, many changes, but there are some increases. You know, we should note that the county, as a reminder, gets all the green fees at the golf course. The current agreement states that we get 34% of the cart fees, so that's really something to keep in mind when you look at our Paradise Point Golf Course. With historic sites, there really aren't any changes except for just setting that fifth year out fee schedule. Marketing and tourism, you know, we've looked at, you know, could there be potential fees of marketing tourism in the past, essentially, if there would be, be a promotional event or something of that nature? So, that's essentially what that is, but we don't have any changes with that. Plan and zoning, there's a look at the snapshot of revenues, and then on the second slide, I'll look at the, you know, additional changes that are being proposed this year. Really just listed, this one does have a little more changes, more immediate, some, And then we have parks, a list there. The only real change to parks was, you know, talking about the discounts that are available, really just defining that they'll be available to veterans as well as seniors. I think it was already listed like that, but previously it said military, military ID. I think now it specifically says veterans, so I think that's a positive thing. The Recorder of Deeds, we, you know, note that we're adding the subscriber fee that was previously approved earlier in this year. And you can see sort of how the revenue breaks out with the Recorder of Deeds between specific funds. It's not just the Recorder Fund, you also have a Domestic Violence Fund, which I think that came up in an earlier discussion about, you know, that pass-through situation by Missouri statute. You have a Children's Trust Fund and of course, the General Fund. Road and Bridge, so again, clearly, these are not, you know, all the revenues tied with the Road and Bridge Department, but these are some of the ancillary fees that they charge dealing with permitting and inspections. And some of the changes here, they've added an inspection fee for a conditional use permit and a pre-existing unpermitted driveway, and they've eliminated map, map fees because that's now handled by GIS. Lastly, we have the Sheriff, really only two fees listed. Inmate Housing for Cities, I spoke at the Sheriff's Office and they're proposing a change, it's listed as 2029. They're in discussions with municipalities about when they exactly want to roll this out, so currently, they've listed it as 2029, but that, they're proposing to increase that for Clay County municipalities. And then you have CCW permits, which have another fee schedule that can be changed. That one is primarily set by statute, however, as well as some of the others in those other departments. So, I know it's exhilarating, but the Royals are on, so I'm happy to answer any questions or department heads are here.
Commissioner Lawson, you are keyed in.
The only question I had is that I, I noticed that, go back a, a slide if you can.
Which department?
Yeah, okay, that's good, a good example. So, 24 year-to-date, we're already in October, so is, are these figures through the end of September? Okay.
No, these, I actually pulled these as of, you know, this week, so.
Of when?
As of yesterday and today.
Oh, okay, okay. So, we're kind of down in a lot of areas, I've noticed.
You know, and there can be a lot of factors with this. I mean, we have, we have the recorder here, I think we did, I think if we expanded this picture, I left out the year of 2020 because it was a little weird, but if you go back, say, a decade, I think that's not too out of the norm. We did have a lot of weird bumps actually post-COVID, especially in our, in our Parks Department. A lot of folks wanted to get outside recording, I don't know that I can explain that per se with the, you know, the bump in 2021, but recorder is here, but no, I don't, I don't see any concerning trend there.
Okay, well, it was kind of that way all across the board, and I, I, like camping was really down and things like that, which surprised me.
And again, if I could just chime in, I, I think the auditor's point is well-taken is COVID changed a lot of things in 2020 and 2020, especially in our parks. So, there was a lot of utilization and things are starting to go back to sort of the normal trend, but you're absolutely right. You know, our campgrounds, our parks have been busy all season long, so.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll mention on parks, what's interesting with the, the slip leases at our marinas, those are really on kind of like an annual schedule, so you'll see a big, a big jump at the end of the year and so.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Further questions of the auditor?
So, the intent is just for the commission is this will be on your agenda next week for adoption of the fees.
Okay, very good. That brings us to administrator comments.
Actually, if I could back up just one for reports that are in your packet, just to note for the public.
Oh, I am, sorry, please, go ahead, yeah.
There are two reports that are in your packet and in the agenda. The first item is the Gladstone Special Road District, their annual report from July 2023 through June 30th, 2024. And then also the auditor's cash basis monthly report as of September is included in the agenda packet.
Thank you. And that brings us to the administrator's comments, trying to get you up there, just talking as much as I can.
I know, everybody wants to go watch the game, so just a couple of items. Number one is to remind everyone that county offices will be closed on Monday in observance of Columbus Day, and go Royals.
All right, now for commissioner comments, Commissioner Withington?
Excuse me, there you go.
So, I'm kind of disappointed I'm the only one wearing Royals stuff up here, you guys should be disappointed in yourselves. But I want to give a shout out to my buddy, Mike Wazbisky. Mike and I worked at Cerner together, and Mike got into a different career, got into sports marketing, and he's currently the Assistant Athletic Director at the University of Minnesota, the Golden Gophers. And the Golden Gophers had a pretty big win this weekend, they beat University of Southern California, and they beat them so bad that USC is no longer in the top 25, so go Golden
Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Wagner, excuse me. There you are.
I'm just going to point out for Commissioner Withington, I am wearing my baby blues and I got my, a crown here too, so go Royals and get those Yankees, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter? We got to get to the game, so I have nothing to say. Let's, let's get to, let's get to the ballgame. With that, we are adjourned. With that, we are adjourned.